Okay, Stephen, you're on speaker.
Do we have some other comments? Larry? Rob in there?
Hello, everyone. I'm just here to support the middle school soccer club. Soccer is very important in this area. And realizing that middle school soccer club does not exist in this school district.
Many other school districts have middle school soccer. And I'm also in the soccer club for the local teams. And realizing many of the kids have to transition from when they go to middle school to Quakertown or Keystone or LBU because they don't have a team here to play. And really, kind of, they leave for each other for two or three years and they come back and play here for JV and varsity. So we're losing that continuity between the kids learning to play with each other and having a coach who's going to coach them all the way through. A lot, much of us have worked together really hard to pull something together. Mark Zimmerman's been great to help and work with us. We've also solidified a coach if we were able to get this passed through. And we are also willing and ready to do fundraising to make sure everything is covered as we roll out this team for the spring. It will be a coed team. It will be in the spring, which is when the other teams in this district also play middle school soccer.
When you asked a question. Why did, why the spring is supposed to be a fall sport?
That's when the Colonial League middle school teams play.
Answer that question.
Yeah.
Why coed?
It's what the middle school teams do for Colonial League.
Exactly.
And it's also great to have both of them together.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
Yeah.
And may I ask a question, too? Why now and why is it not taking place within the youth program?
Because the kids are leaving to go other places. They have other sports they're attending to. And we, fall soccer is the sport in this, in this Southern High Soccer Club, not spring. And so they're leaving and going and doing other sports. And so it's kind of falling apart because Keystone and LBU and Quakertown and all these other teams are forming in middle school and we're losing the kids to other sports. My son just hit middle school this year and that's when I realized we didn't have a spring team last year and he couldn't play soccer. And so we're trying to figure out how to keep the teams and the coaches together and have them play through middle school up into JV and then into varsity.
Okay. And I guess what's the downside of them going to play another sport as opposed to soccer in the spring?
Well, the only two sports that the school offers is softball and track and field. That's the only two sports the middle school offers. And track and field, I would understand, is packed and the boys can't play softball.
And historically, you may not be aware of this, there used to be a middle school boys and girls lacrosse team. And they were club sports, they were sponsored. But parents decided to take them back to the youth program. So what would prevent that happening from the soccer club perspective also?
I'm on the board and we're all supportive of this because we're all having the same challenges. We also thought having a coed team would make it, to guarantee more people would play because if you have coed, you only need, you know, 20 kids, 18 kids with the team. And so we definitely feel like we could field a team with being a coed team for seventh and eighth grade. We're having over 600 and some kids in the program for travel soccer in the club. But as we get to the older ages, they're funneling somewhere else because they don't have a middle school team to play for.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one other?
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks. And I know parents have brought this up in the past and the answer I've always heard when they've talked to athletics and the administration is there weren't enough people in Colonial that had, that, you know, there weren't schools around doing this. So the fact that there are now is encouraging. Could you tell me what some of the other schools in the Colonial League are? Like, how many are there now?
I believe right now we're looking at a 12-game schedule. So it'd be six home games and six away games for all the teams that are in the Colonial League.
All identified within the Colonial League already with middle school coed teams. Great.
Yes.
Great, thanks, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
May I just, one more question. Are there 12, there are 12 other schools or 11 other schools?
There's six, so you play six home and then six away. So you have a 12-game schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, what are the rules with a, well, you know, a coed sport like that when you're the girls, you're playing on?
Or the boys, Jeff, or the boys?
Or the boys, yeah.
I think it's up to the coach. There's not a requirement or a rule that the boys have to have a certain amount of time or the girls have to have a certain amount of time. We don't know who's going to have me here and try out. We believe it's going to be a lot more than they can play. So we've got to figure out whether we have an A-team or a B-team or whether we try to figure out how to make it fair for all of the players. The coach is very well aware that he's willing to do this for us and he will help work with us to figure out the best way of making this work the fair way. He also coaches in the school district already. So I think that's a big leg up to have somebody who already coaches soccer in the school district take over the middle school team.
Did you say Coach Mark Evans?
Yes.
Is that who you mentioned?
Yes.
Great, thanks, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
May I just ask one more question? I apologize. For the other school districts that do this, do you know what the makeup is, male, female?
They're all coed. I don't know what the exact makeup is. I could probably try to reach out and find out. I think it depends on who all tries out.
Sure. I'm just curious if, if it's relatively equal or is it skewed one way or the other?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know myself. I don't think that would be close with you.
Yeah, me too. That's right. And my concern is, I mean, I, I coach soccer and my girls' team beats the 2012 boys' team. That's why the team was, I, I didn't mean in any way to suggest that the girls' team compete, but I do want to make, but at the same level, I mean, really, my question is geared towards ensuring that, you know, that girls would have, you know, you know, I think it's important if there's not rules in place.
Sure.
And it is a competitive sport, that, you know, coaches are going to do whatever coaches are going to do.
Right.
That's why I was, I would have thought perhaps they would require a certain number of either gender to be playing on the field at any given time. But that's not the case in the current.
From what I understand, it's not the case. I think the nice thing is, is we're going to work collaboratively with Mark and he's going to help figure out what we can do. I think we all know the seventh, eighth grade boys and girls, most of the girls are bigger and stronger than some of the guys because of the age they're in. And so I don't see it being an issue because I think, as we've played your team as well in different leagues, I think there's very competitive leagues and they're very close in age, in size, in height, in strength.
You know, and if I, I see Mr. Zimmerman may have a bit of information. Mr. Reinhardt, we're going all over on this.
That's okay, it's an agenda item, let's just get it done.
Mr. Zimmerman, I see you might have a thought on this question.
Could you repeat that answer just so I'm sure I heard that?
One girl needs to be participating at all times.
One girl has to be participating on the field. On the field at all times? Thanks, Mr. Zimmerman. Or possibly, I don't think that's how the rule's written, Jeff, I think you have a point here. I agree, I agree. Motion, Jeff. No, I'm kidding. Could, since...
To your point, so if you had, you know, if we actually had to, would it be a cap potentially on the number of participants? And to your point, then we would, what you're saying is we would, we would have a 50-50 split of, of...
Assuming we have a lot of interest.
Right, I got you, okay.
I mean, I think the goal was a key between 22, 20 and 22 players. If we have a lot more participating, we'll have to figure out whether, maybe it's whether some kids play six games and other kids play six games, they don't like, play the whole season and we'll switch it up. We really don't know the participation. I just know from my kid being in this age specifically and seeing what we have in the youth program and seeing how many JV and varsity kids we have playing on the sidelines for high school, there's a huge demand for soccer in this area and it's growing. And so we'll have to figure that out. We talked to Mark about it, whether we're going to have too many or not enough and we have to figure out whether we do cuts, whether we have, maybe you play six games each and that's all you get to do. We got to figure all that out. But until we get approval, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know yet, so.
And do you still have the coed team in the fall?
We do not have a coed team in the fall. It's, it's not coed in the fall.
Northern Valley.
It's individuals.
Northern Valley travel.
Northern Valley travel has the code, that's what you're thinking of. Our players funnel into Northern Valley.
Our oldest played on it, that's why I'm asking. Because it, it did exist, but it was fall.
It still exists.
Right.
Just not, just not within Southern High SLSL. It's embedded, but SLSL feeds Northern Valley. It still exists. Could I, I had two more questions about this. Do you want me to save them until it's an agenda item? Because so, since we're on this now?
Yeah, I think so, let's move on.
I just thought Mr. Vitter perhaps could weigh in if the admin, because it's going to be a club team. So I didn't know if, my questions revolve around sign up and...
Why don't you just finish your questions, Emily, and then we'll move on.
Okay, right, okay, great, thanks. When I saw this on the agenda, the two questions that came to mind were, one, club teams in the past, the last club team we had was a volleyball team, which then became a varsity sport. And I see Mr. Zimmerman remembering this and shaking his head. So when the policy states that the team has to be self-funded with interest for, I believe it's three years before they can be considered, are we spelling this out that it is, perhaps the thought is going to be that then this will convert to a school-sponsored sport? Or is that thought laid out that, is it the understanding that the club sport may exist, but it is not with the understanding that this will roll into a school sport at the end, the conclusion of those two or three years? I just want both parties to be fully, you know, transparently communicating with each other what the expectation is. Could you?
Right, and our expectation according to...
Our expectation according to the policy is that after three years, this will have to come before the board again. And then the board at that time will have the opportu, if they request, it has to be requested. And if at that time the board would like to fund it, it can. But if the board would prefer not to fund it, it also would have that opportunity. So it's not an automatic, do my three and then the fourth year it's a, it's a sport. There would be another application process such as this after three years for the board to decide at that time.
Great, thank you. And my other question, in the proposal, I appreciated that this is going to be a privately-funded club activity. And that the, within there was contained that there would be efforts and to communicate that anyone who does want to participate but who cannot financially contribute or participate in fundraising was still welcomed. I'm 100%. And I saw that in that proposal and I appreciate that. And my question in the collaboration, some of the collaborative elements for transportation or field usage, one of them, I didn't see in there a collaborative element of, will the school help support the sign-up process in a way that is similar to our, for this club, in a way that's similar to our sports so that you can check a box? And it, I mean, I'm kind of asking both, you know, the, the folks proposing this and the administration, is that going to be collaborative? You can check this box and say, I fall into a certain category and I need financial support the same way you could when you were signing up for a varsity sport?
I, I just see Mr. Zimmerman nodding and so I suspect that is the case, yes.
Okay. And I see other folks nodding. I just wanted to get that out there, that that's how that would be conducted and you wouldn't have to be a self-advocate kind of saying, I joined the team, but, okay, great. As long as that's... Assuming along those same lines, the same thing would carry forward for a physical, for example, like you have to go through that process and signing up.
Our goal would be to hopefully make this as seamless as possible, being a, a school sport but being funded by a club fundraising.
Right, oh, it's wonderful, thanks.
So the kids can do the exact same processes and learn, be able to not, not be able to not play if they can't afford to. So we're going to work through all those processes as well.
Okay, now, now I do have a question, I'm sorry. Will the coaching staff not, you said it was one of our current soccer coaches. If there are, would we be going through the approval process, like, just like we would for any of the other sports?
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, you could think about it for a few minutes if you have more. We'll come back to it.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming up to the mic and speaking, giving us that opportunity.
Any other comments, visitor comments? Okay. Doesn't matter.
Good teachers, I had a great time at Open House, meeting all my teachers, my daughter's teachers. Each gave me ways to, multiple ways to contact them. I already reached out to several. I already reached out to several offering my support. It's nice to know that I, as a parent, have rights to express, sorry, it keeps logging me out for the password. I look for, I look forward to teaming with them. I encourage them all, I encourage all of them to keep doing what they're doing in spite of the attacks on your profession. According, according to a recent survey, satisfaction with local schools is at a near 50-year-high. That message is sometimes drowned out. You do matter. Possible resources that I'd love our district to possibly communicate to teachers. Freedom's Foundation is a free teacher summer workshop program available down at Valley Forge for Act 48. I attended several other great workshops, including a Medal of Honor curriculum. I also serve as an officer in the volunteer chapter and we have a lot of scholarship money to send students there for weekend leadership trainings in the spring. PSEA Eastern Region has $1,000 scholarship contests available for members who have a child who is a senior and continuing their education. DVDs, if there's any teachers or administrators in the room who would like DVDs, I have a couple of them. The Children's March are being bullied, it's from teaching tolerance. I have a few to give away. My dog is a three-legged rescue. I'd love to bring her into Southern High Schools to read with children, but I understand there's probably some rules on that. The Grinch, a local organization, has let me borrow the Grinch costume again. I went into Allentown last year, had an awesome time, probably more than the kids. Now, the kids had a great time, too, and I'd love to come into Southern High Schools if allowed. I already spoke to a principal. So I don't know what kind of clearances the Grinch needs. Food service, the state has a plan for free breakfast programs. I'm glad we're exploring it. No child should be hungry. Lastly, sex, sex education. Of course, I want it taught at home. However, if taught in school, I'd suggest we consider moving beyond abstinence-only curriculum, if that is our curriculum. My daughter said she has had no instruction on the subject yet in school and she's a junior. There are candidates running who want to make abortion totally illegal in our state. No matter what your stance is on the abortion issue, I'd hope that we want to take a proactive, preventive step, take proactive, preventive steps in our education. Texas revised standards in this area for the first time in more than 20 years. This fall, the state's minimum health standards now go beyond abstinence and include teaching middle schoolers about contraceptives. I'm not suggesting necessarily that for young children in middle school. If the idea of teaching this makes parents uncomfortable, perhaps we could have an opt-out. Perhaps our health partners could help us, parents could help us. But I think we need to acknowledge that there are preventive measures out there and move beyond just say no when it comes to this, especially...
Mr. Carter, your time is up.
...state law changes. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Moyer?
Yes, thank you. There was an executive session tonight where discussion was had concerning potential litigation of personal matter and another legal-related matter.
Can I have a motion to approve the board minutes of August 22nd and the workshop minutes of September 12th?
So moved.
Oh, we got it. Did you catch that? I was, okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Dr. Mann?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mrs. Reinhardt. Just a few quick things. We're very pleased to report that on Wednesday this week, we're having our first meeting, a pre-construction meeting with some of vendors who will be working on the stadium project. We are still on track to begin construction in late November. We still have opened the question of scoreboards and the facility committee will have to be, we're gathering some information, the facility committee will have to be developing some information, recommendations on that to bring back to the board. But we're, we're on schedule, which is really great. On another topic, as was mentioned, we hope to have an announcement in early October about universal free breakfast for our students under a new program that is being put forth where people can just get free meals. And so we're working, Mr. Pepe and his staff are working on getting that done. And then the, the big focus tonight in my report has to do with one of our district initiatives. And that is the reworking and the reexamination of our policy book. Our goal is, over the course of the next 18 months or two years, to completely revamp our policies, bring them up to speed, also to develop administrative regulations that would give us specific guidance on the implementation of these policies. I've asked Mr. Pigeon to oversee this effort and he has an introductory presentation tonight to talk about the process and how he envisions this unfolding. So, Mr. Pigeon, thank you for your efforts and thank you, Stages.
So I'll come up here so everybody can see my backside, at least part of it. So we're going to talk about board policies tonight and the process of obtaining a board policy and what actually is a board policy. And I'm sorry, I don't have a clicker or anything, so I'm going to give Chris a heads-up when I need to move. So the first slide here says board policy, of school board's role in policymaking. All right, this is one of the most important roles the school board has. There is some ethical and legal obligations and it's also defined in the school code in section 407 and 510 that grant the school board the ability to make reasonable rules and regulations for the school district. Chris? Policy is a clear statement that sets forth purpose, prescribes in general terms, the organizational and, and programs of a school district. So it kind of describes what is happening within the district and how it is happening. Policy creates a framework within which the superintendent and staff can discharge assigned duties with a positive direction. And then policy is a course of action. And we're going to, and why I'm defining this, we're going to talk about the difference between administrative regulations and policies. Every policy should have certain elements, you know, what needs to be in the policy? It needs to have a purpose. It needs to have authority on who directs and authorizes the policy. Any definitions that need to be clearly established within the policy. It has delegation of responsibilities and guidelines necessarily to carry out the policy. Policies are related to general topics. Broad statements guiding the administrative actions. They're applicable over time, communicated to all stakeholders, and equivalent to law. Effective school boards, regular review and necessarily revise and adopt board policies. So they delegate to the superintendent responsibility for implementations of board policy and they ensure public access to adopted board policies. And we'll go over how that's going to happen as we move forward. The next, and I'm sorry, this one's a little smaller, but a draft policy, you know, how are we going to adapt our policies? So we are working with PSBA. So PSBA will send us a draft policy. Then as an administrative team, we're going to review that policy and make recommendations and, and, you know, hone it in towards Southern High. After the administrative team reviews the policy, we're going to send it off to our legal team to make sure what we have done and what PSBA done is legal. Then we will be sending it out to the board prior to a meeting. So prior to a workshop meeting, we'll send the policy to the board so they can review and be prepared to have questions at the workshop meeting that'll be coming up. After the workshop meeting, after the policy moves forward, it will go to first reading at the next public meeting or our voting meeting. And then there'll be a second reading at the, the meeting following the next month. So it'll take approximately two months for one policy to go through. So we're going to be doing a bunch of them at a time. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one step there. After the first meeting, after the, the workshop meeting, we're going to post it on the public website under a section that will say that it's a draft policy still, so that the community can see the policy also and have comments if necessary. After it's approved, the policy will then go into the policy book. And I have another slide that'll talk about what happens after that. Next is the policy versus an administrative regulation. So you can see a policy is a general topic where to make, yeah, administrative regulation is more of a specific topic. Policies have broad statements allowing discretion, where the administrative regulations have precise statements with details. Policies are applicable over time, where administrative regulations could be changed throughout the terms of the policy. Policy is communicated as a public document. Administrative regulations are communicated mainly to staff. Policies are equivalent to law of the school district. The administrative regulations are directives to staff actions, enforce staff actions. Policies are the what and the administrative regulations are the how of the process. Once a policy is adopted, it's placed in the board policy handbook. And again, that's a public document on our website. We'll offer training to our Southern High staff. So all staff will have access to the training and we'll use Safe Schools, our, our current training process for that, to send it out to all staff so they have access to it. We'll be documenting that staff training because when they go through the Safe Schools program, they'll be saying that they understand and, and can comply with the policy. And then we'll have a yearly review of all policies and it'll be incorporated to the staff in a yearly process. We just did that in August, where we send out policies to the staff to review on a regular basis. So now I want to go over kind of a specific timeline. So we have currently 227 board policies. And remember, I told you, it takes about two months to get one of them through. We're, we're hoping to get this, this process done in 18 months. So we'll be chunking, putting a bunch of policies together, usually by grouping, and you can see the different groups there as they're outlined in the board policy handbook. And then moving them through the board and making our recommendations to the board, going through that process. So hopefully the PSBA will consolidate some of these policies. Because currently we have a section for our administrators, a section for our professional employees, and a section for our classified employees. As, as, I understand that as PSBA has been moving forward, they've combined those three sections into just an employee section. They might have some different policies specific to a different group within that, but it'll, it'll consolidate that quite a bit. So we should be down between 185 and 200 policies by the time we're done. So we believe we can get this done in an 18-month period. So, for example, and this is only for example, if we send the whole triple zero group, the draft policies, to the administrative team tonight, if we were to send it to the administrative team for review, they'd have a week to review that policy and then it would go to the legal team. Now, again, I fudged the numbers here a little bit since we're starting not for the workshop and we're a little short on that. So the legal team would only have three days to review those policies. Jesse, you've got plenty of time, no worries. We're going to try to get those policies back out to our, our Board of Directors by the 5th of October. So that they are prepared to discuss it on the 10th in the workshop. If it moves forward from the workshop, then the, the draft policies would go to the first reading at the October voting meeting, which will be on the 24th. And then the second reading would be on November 21st, which would be the November voting meeting. So that'll, that gives you a little bit over two months for the policies to be done. Now, I have a whole timeline all developed, but I, at this point, it's still, we're still working with PSBA to get our policies and our documents that they need to them. And once we do that, then we can finalize our, our draft timeline and I will gladly share that with the board at that time. So you can see how it looks and what it's going to happen. And we can make any amendments or any adjustments to it as necessary as we move forward.
Could I ask you a quick question on that timeline? So when you laid that out, the, so the workshop wouldn't be the first reading, that would be the discussion?
Correct.
And then the first reading would be the meeting, the, of the month? Okay, got it, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question for that, and that is the addition of a board committee. And maybe Ms. Reinhardt, you may want to comment?
I'm certainly in favor of folks joining committee who have an interest and passion for policy development. I'm not sure how many folks do. Jeff's at us in the table. No, no.
I just complain, like anything, I just complain when it comes up here. I have no process.
I think what we can do, and this is my opinion, and you're all welcome to agree or disagree or put forth your ideas, but I would like to see us get started with this quickly and get it off to ground, Mr. Pigeon. And as we move forward, if it becomes encumbered and we feel that a small committee would be helpful to you, or you feel a committee would be helpful to you, I think we can look at putting that together. Is that a, what is that?
That sounds reasonable.
Good strategy, folks?
That sounds great. Could I just ask one, also one favor? And I think this would be very helpful for the community. So when we do post or when we do get any of these committees, or I'm sorry, any of these policies that have been changed by PSBA, could we see what our old policy was and what the changes were? I think that would be very helpful. It would certainly be helpful for me as a board member to see what changes were made to a policy. And I think it would be helpful, hopefully, for the community to see any changes that were made.
I mean, usually we have, when we go through the process, there's strike-throughs that are visible. So it would be very easy, I think, to do that because we're going to, it sounds like, based on what Tony's saying, we would have working drafts kind of up. So we would probably see that.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess, what I'm understanding is that you're sending our current policies to PSBA, and then they're sending us maybe a new policy in place of what our current one was.
No, there'll be, there'll be strike-throughs.
Okay, good.
And actually, there's a lot of options in there too, because we were just discussing some different things. And, you know, what is functional for Southern Lehigh? You know, because PSBA does not know Southern Lehigh, PSBA knows policy. So they write very general, and they give more than one option a lot of times. So that's why the administrative team would take a look at it. But yes, we can gladly put in strike-throughs and anything else.
Yeah, and the guidance I would like to have, and I think if we eliminate 30-some, that's great. But we still have policies, in my opinion, that really aren't needed. And if we could really question if we need to have a policy and look at the best option of either removing it altogether, or can it be combined, or does it already exist to the adequate degree in other areas of the policy? And just reduce it down to something that's administratively, but more importantly, functionally appropriate and meaningful? Because we have so many policies right now that just people don't know, they can't act on them, and there's just no awareness. So make them useful in terms of what we end up with.
Okay.
Can I say, sorry, can I ask a quick question about, you said the policies? It was a great explanation of the policies, it was just the ARs. Thanks for laying that out there. I know in the past, the concept of the policy is the what, and the AR is the how, if I'm quoting it kind of there correctly. Some ARs, I think, in the past, just because it was practical to do so, were made public because, you know, if the policy is, I don't know, attendance, and the how is, the AR is public because it's, you have to be in the door by, you know, this time through this entrance, and that's the AR. Are all, would any ARs, are all ARs, could you explain again, are all ARs more of a private in-house document for teachers? Or are some ARs public? Is that a, are they both public documents? I know there have been some questions in the past because people have said, like, well, how is that going? How, here's the policy, but that doesn't tell me as much as the how. And sometimes the how is very informative to the public or the community. So is that also public, or is that not a public set of documents?
I mean, I do, I'll defer to our solicitor, but I believe the ARs would all be public documents.
That's what I was, okay.
I don't know that I've ever seen them posted in their entirety. But, I mean, I don't know how much value that would bring, but if people wanted to know, what is the AR around, you know, administering the parking lot? We, it's just a public document.
Right, I was basically wondering if some would be posted, if they've been posted in the past, or obviously, it'd probably be confusing to post them each side by side. That would be, but if there was a public resource, would it save time to direct the public? Or would that complicate things?
I think, for example, facility use. The Board may want to put up a policy regarding facility use, but the AR would be a really good thing to have posted.
Exactly.
Because then the requestor would know all the different steps involved.
Exactly, that's a much better example than my attempt.
So I very much think that, in that case, we would want the AR to be public because it's helpful, right? But other ARs may not, may be less so, and may, there might be less cause to have them posted.
Okay.
And then the only, the only thought I would share is that there's the old adage, "The perfect should not be the enemy of the good." And in reviewing this large, large volume of policies, there will always be opportunities to make something good perfect. But, you know, 18 months can easily turn to 18 years if, you know, we really go down that road. So in the back of my mind, I think, as a theme I found to be helpful, the perfect not being the enemy of the good, but we need to get good for our policies, for sure. So that's my only thought as we continue.
Well said. I just had one quick comment, more than a question. You know, PSBA, I'm not a huge fan of PSBA, I never have been. I think their policies, most recently during the pandemic, were not helpful. There's a, you know, it's a political advocacy group, for the most part. So we're farming out to them our policy, which I understand that, you know, there's no other option. There's no second, you know, conservative version of the Public School Board Association. So, you know, I'm always wary about what comes out of them. I'm happy to hear, maybe there'll be options there. But I certainly will read carefully what some of their suggestions are. And I suspect some people really like the PSBA on the Board, and maybe some people don't care, and maybe I'm the only one with this opinion, so, you know, all come to a vote eventually.
Jeff, I think you should be the Chair of the Committee.
No, no. Nope, but I was just saying, I do want us to, I'm always a little wary of, like, wholeheartedly turning, you know, policies, as much as I kid, and I don't want to have any part of a committee. I mean, a policy, these policies are powerful, as you indicated, they're law. They, as sort of boring and unexciting as they may seem, they, you know, really do sort of in many ways set the agenda for the school district on behalf of the school, and one of the most direct ways that the school board sort of sets that agenda. And so, again, from my perspective, and I don't suspect I speak for the Board on this, but from my perspective, I am, I don't see the PSBA as a completely neutral entity on this. And I would look at it with sort of a more critical eye, maybe than others. And so I would ask that, since, Tony, you'll be sort of implementing some of this, that to the extent you can give us multiple options that are coming out of the PSBA or other things, I think that would be helpful, at least for my understanding. Because to Mike's point, we still got to get policies done, they're very important. I don't, I'm not suggesting in any way that we shouldn't have policies, or our policies shouldn't be up to date, or that they shouldn't be on point. They, all those things should be, and the good is better than the perfect. And so I think this does need to be adopted and adopted in a, in a good amount of time. So maybe in streamlining that, my concerns would be that we're just seeing, you know, multiple options out there for maybe the way things are done. We don't have the option to go to another state because we're with our school code.
Well, Mr. Demick, I'm going to interrupt you and ask our solicitor, because that's why she's here, what the resources are for policy development for school districts in Pennsylvania beyond PSBA.
Very limited. PSBA, oh, I'm sorry. PSBA is really the resource that most school districts rely upon. The other resource that you could do was pay our. Sorry, nobody has ever accused me of being quiet. The other resource would be that you have our firm do it. And if you want to discuss cost savings, it would probably be better to have PSBA do the first draft, have your administrative team, and then have us eyeball it. I personally do not know of any other group, whatever it may be, out there who does draft policies. And these are a lot of policies that are going to come through. When Tony tells me I have three days and they chunk them, that 100 series has like 25, maybe? Oh, stop it, there's a lot. Yeah, okay, but there's a lot. So I mean, you, not to, you know, bring work into my firm, but you're getting a good deal by utilizing PSBA and using us on a limited basis just to kind of go through. But I understand.
Okay, so there's no substitution for all of us being involved, reading the policies, and giving our feedback, and Jeff, I, to your point, I think it's well taken. Do we have any other comments or questions for Mr. Pigeon? Thank you very much for that presentation, it was excellent.
Wait, hang on a sec, I don't have a question for Mr. Pigeon, but we, Mr. Mann glossed over the construction update, but I had a question about the construction.
Sure.
Sorry, didn't gloss over, but we.
That's okay, go ahead, go back.
For funding, for, I've had a number of, a few community members approach me about donating and sponsoring, and who do we call, what do we do? And, and one of the things they're saying is, why isn't anybody asking? So I'm asking, and I'd had, I had one person say, hey, are you guys going to do something like the bricks over at Salisbury where they have, if you donate so much money, you get your name on a brick, and like, little stuff like that? And, yeah, parents and community members don't know what to do with the, I don't want to say they don't know what to do with their money, but they want to contribute, and they don't know how.
Right, thank you for the question, and I will, and again, members of the Committee could certainly add to this. But we have, I have also, and I'm sure others have, received similar inquiries about how people can get involved. And one of the things that we have to do is, and I think the scoreboard is going to be a big source of revenue and something that we can utilize to help answer these questions. But, so, that information will be forthcoming, but one of the things we have to do is, decide on a scoreboard, decide on this, and then develop, for example, like, a schedule of rates for a sign or for a, you know, a period where your ad is up there at halftime or whatever, but a comprehensive list. And then, once that is in place, we'll be able to go out and engage in conversation and respond to people who have been asking us. But when people have asked me, I say, look, there will be opportunities. We're still a little early in the process to be addressing it, but we very much intend to have those opportunities. And I've been quite amazed at how much we've been hearing that people are excited about participating. And we just have to develop a logical structure that will allow that to take place.
I've been approached by two business owners in the community that wanted to, you know, like around the baseball fields where they, you get the signs. They were wondering if we were going to do something like that, and that they would love, love to pay for, to have their signs up around the.
It's a process that has to be developed.
Yeah, I totally get that, I'm just throwing it out there that people are asking.
Encouraging enthusiasm.
I would like to have somewhere to steer them because I don't want them to either become disinterested or think, well, they don't want my money, they want a gift.
Yeah, I mean, I would say with, from the Facilities Committee, I think the best place to steer them is to the administration. The administration can take down the information, and as we go through the process of looking at sponsorships and looking at things such as bricks, which can all be part of the project, that's where it starts, is the administration having a contact, having the name, and what their interest would be. You know, we explored a variety of things back in 2016, as far as signage and other things. And there are pros, and there are cons, and there are people's opinions that some don't want signs that are permanent in the facility. They'd rather have it electronic where it can be changed and things such as that. So we have to go through the process to get there. But I think the interested parties that want to do something more elaborate than bricks, certainly have them reach out to the administration. In regards to the bricks, I think that would be a lovely thing to do. I think it may be something that we have to explore with the contractors when that can be done, and, you know, how much lead.
It was just an idea.
No, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. It may not be, it may not be part of the first phase of actually getting the stadium in, but that's something we could do later on in terms of a pathway or the area over by the concession stand, et cetera. So I think we have some time, and I'm also cognizant of how long it would take to get a brick, and it's not as easy as just ordering it. So there's a process we have to look at with all of these things, and not do anything that's going to derail the stadium being ready by August of next year. That's primary, because we can't have the sports teams impacted for two seasons.
My only thought on that, and if I could, to Kyle's point, you know, my thought on that is that, you know, like, take the scoreboard, that seems to be the one item that's still out there, unapproved, and not designed yet. You know, I would like to, that's a nice-to-have kind of thing in my mind. And it's, it's a little bit tougher to ask the taxpayers to pay for that because it's kind of a cool thing, more so than an impact on, on the way the sport is played or the development of the athletes. And for that reason, you know, at least I personally am, you know, less willing to spend, you know, a decent sum on that. But that, you know, to me, that's the kind of thing that might be appropriate for, here's this really basic scoreboard, you know? Because you know what a scoreboard basically tells you, the score and the time, right? Which is what we currently have. And so I'm cool with, well, I'm cool with that. If we have to, we could have the little flip numbers down there, you know? But, you know, and if you want something cooler than that, community, then, you know, you can pay for something cooler than that because, you know, the person that's on a fixed income, you know, maybe shouldn't have to be paying for that cooler thing that doesn't really impact the other overall athletics. And so that gives you the incentive out there, and it also gives you the shiny object up there that you show people, hey, this, look at this LED scoreboard, and, you know, we could put your names up here, and there are digital options. So in my, my way of thinking, if there are folks out there, and I suspect there are, that are interested, and maybe we can kind of give them, instead of kind of spread loading it, or, you know, maybe it's, look, we're looking at a scoreboard, and here's our options for a scoreboard, and this is what they cost, and this is what the school board is willing to pay. And honestly, if you want these other bells and whistles, this would be a great way to contribute. And oh, by the way, maybe if you can contribute, there's ways that we can recognize that contribution through the scoreboard itself or other ways. But maybe we should think of a more formal means about that. Because I know, Bill, in the past, you had a lot of experience with the fundraising piece of things. And so that's, that's the way I would like to see us maybe move forward on that issue.
Well, at this point, can we ask the administration to come up with a plan for how to roll this out?
I mean, I'd like to echo, I agree with Mr. Demick. I think if you do it in a prospective manner, you're more apt to get a scoreboard perhaps that would achieve, you know, what a lot of people want in the community as opposed to going about it the other way.
I think it's actually, I have to say. One person at a time, please, can I just finish? I was going to ask the administration to put together a plan for how to roll this out, how to present it to the community, and then how to communicate. Okay, I think we're going to get stuck in a, a lot of details here. And everybody has great ideas, so perhaps people can share those ideas with Mr. Mann.
And what I was trying to imply was, I agree with that, having a plan, but what I'm indicating is, I think, a more proactive, perspective-based plan rather than kind of sitting back and letting the donors show interest. I think show them what they could have interest in contributing towards. Show them the shiny bells and whistles.
Right, it's kind of like the, like either the chicken or the egg, or the Field of Dreams approach, right? Where, you know, if you build it, they will come, which is kind of the Field of Dreams approach. But the other side of it is, you know, if you were saying, you know, this is what we're going to do, we have to have a scoreboard or a vision of what that is, but then if we don't get the money, then that, you know, it's like, again, there is a bit of a chicken and the egg on that side of it.
I mean, what I would suggest from the Facilities Committee, maybe at the next meeting or upcoming meetings, is having, you know, three options, let's say. You have a basic, a mid-level, and a premium kind of thing, and figure out what the cost differences are, and gauge the interest level from the community and what we can afford. Because I agree, it's not, you know, we can, I think, you know, I agree, given our upcoming expenses that we know are still coming. I too am not, I'm weary of spending too much on a scoreboard because you basically need something that can tell the score.
So, Mr. Pepe, we'll have to think about.
I just wanted, I wanted to throw out too, just as a little side note, that one of our greatest, I think, underutilized resources is our PTAs and PTGs. They, like, I know Liberty Bell alone, for their big fundraiser every year, they raise around $15,000, and that's just one building. And maybe it wouldn't hurt to reach out to them as well and maybe get them involved, and maybe they could do something to help too, just an idea.
But didn't that also lead to some issues with the playground? Didn't they not get what they had? Just throwing it up.
Did he get the shiny object they were promised?
No, no, the playground at Liberty Bell never went in.
Let's get them that shiny thing.
They didn't know.
And then get the other shiny things. And then get the other shiny things.
They didn't know where they were, if we were going to be doing an addition on Liberty Bell, so everything had to wait. And then, but it, it was a big thing, but yes.
Good point.
That's like the bait and switch, build it. If you build it, they will come and chicken and egg thing. Okay, we're seeing themes emerge here.
Can I quickly ask, in that same development plan thing, a couple of meetings ago, I, I had asked, there was a nice discussion about the education foundation, is there any movement or contact of officers or any movement with their participation? Because the administration can help with this, but, you know, is there any, is there, if folks are looking for a way to reach out or revitalization, this could be a great, has there been any movement on that or contact with those old folks at all to see a path forward?
Yeah, I'm not sure this is on agenda. We are talking, I think.
No, it's about funding, it's about funding, well, how do we get on this topic? How have we got on the scoreboard?
I think the education foundation is about funding education. We're talking about funding a scoreboard, which is a little bit different.
To Emily's point that I suspect Jessica would say that you're going to have to park private funds, I guess, somewhere.
Somewhere, right.
And we have an entity for that that we could be utilizing otherwise. So I mean, it is connected to that all, the whole idea there.
So I was just asking if there'd been any movement or contact with those folks or any, anything at all? Any progress to report on that or where we are with the ed foundation?
I, I can say some very good conversations are going on among a number of people that I think are premature to discuss in public at this time.
Okay, with specific, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was not asking about donors. I would not presume to ask about names of, I was just thinking.
No, I'm talking about the organization of the foundation. There are some very good conversations among community members that are going on at this point that I think is premature to talk about in, in public at this time.
Okay, about getting the foundation up and running. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But good conversations, good conversations.
Good conversations are good conversations. All right, let's move back to our agenda here. So item five, curriculum student staff services. We have three motions here. One is the attached proposal to add a middle school club soccer team in accordance with board policy 123.2. Motion to approve the high school young educators' club and a motion to approve the attached affiliation agreement with Drexel University and Southernly High as stated in the agenda. Do I have motion?
So moved.
Mrs. King? Any comments or questions on these motions?
I had a question about, oh, sorry. I had a question about item B, the high school young educators' club. Could we just get a really super fast, brief description? And I, I looked at the approvals for the club advisors later on. I didn't see that one, but perhaps it was my mistake. Could you read your description in a.
Yes, Mrs. Spitzer, the high school, one of our teachers has very graciously offered to begin an educator club for students who have aspirations to become teachers. We have thoughts, she has thoughts, very good ones about how students involved may work as tutors to our younger students or their classmates. They may take a field trip to an educational institution. They may shadow a teacher. And we've also have been engaged, Dr. Trinkle, with some of our higher ed partners about how we might leverage this for them as we're always talking about doing enrollment and opportunities. So this is, is really great at every level, especially because we're experiencing huge shortages of teachers. And if we could grow our own here and, and send them off and then have them come back, this is just good in every possible way. So we're excited about it and we're grateful for the support it's received from, from our staff.
Thanks very much, that sounds great. And thanks to Ms. Spitzer for, for taking that on.
I just have a quick question about the soccer. Could you just clarify the, the three-year probationary period as a club?
Yes, it is according to policy. I think 123 and 123.2, right? And so a, a club, a, a, a team that aspires to be a PIAA competing club in order to get there must go through a three-year process where they are a club sport. And as a club sport, they must raise their own money. They're not funded by the school district. And then after that period of time, they could decide to petition the board again to receive status as a PIAA official district sport.
So are there no transportation services that the, the school provides?
I think transportation is something that they would have to try to cover. Now, I'm, I'm not sure if we had a bus going to the same event that we would try to have them jump on it, but I, I think they are responsible for transportation costs. Is that correct, Mr. Zimmerman?
It's in the proposal.
Yeah.
The proposal was great in that way. I really got to see where every dollar was going down to, you know. That, that was wonderful, thanks for that. There was a lot of, we don't know about this, but we're collaborating and cooperating. But the transportation dollar amounts and the referees and the fields eat down to how many, how much for a soccer ball was in there. So thanks for, thanks for doing that. My, my question was also with, I believe when I read the proposal, the field usage was going to be that open field behind the IS would be lined? Is there any cost? I believe it said that the school would be responsible for, I mean, it's responsible for mowing now, but lining and providing goals, which since spring is not a soccer season, I didn't see an additional cost for goals. But as far as lining, is that, is there any cost associated with that? Right, I was saying, we, we have the machines and the paint and we're doing it anyway. And I've lined soccer, I'm sure you all who wrote the proposal have lined soccer fields and we could get on. All right, that was my only remaining question, thanks so much. Oh, and insurance, sorry, that was my other question. Who's covering the insurance?
They're, they're covered by our district.
Under, under our policy, but paying.
Even volunteer, all clubs, you know.
Automatically under our blanket umbrella. Okay, great, see, that's not an additional cost.
And that is by virtue of the fact that the board approves it as an activity.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
And Mr. Zimmerman, is lacrosse no longer using that field space in the spring?
I don't believe they did a whole lot last spring. On top of my end, I believe we use more of lacrosse last spring.
Okay. And do they know the condition of that surface back there?
When I was coaching soccer, we used that as soccer field. So anyone who wasn't familiar, I mean, we, we played soccer back there all the time and lined our own fields with the school's permission. So, yeah, I think if you've been in the club, you're probably aware of, of that, the IS field condition.
All right, because it's not the best.
The best field is the object for all soccer field on the high school in the spring, the lower.
Any other comments or questions?
Just briefly, you know, I don't know if I would be here in three years, but if I am, when, you know, this isn't an automatic, like was already discussed, you know, one of the, one of the things that I think would be reviewed is, is the, you know, the breakdown that, that we are getting, since it's a co-ed team, that, that, you know, both, both sides are near, nearly equally represented and that, you know, they, that both sides are getting nearly, you know, equal playing time is one of the questions I would have. That's just me, but, and so, you know, while this would be a club sport, but when it comes to possibly being recognized as a, as a team sport later on, those are some of the questions that I would have in, in the future. And it's not a, a given. And so I think, at least from my perspective, those are some of the concerns I would like to see. And in three years, we'll hopefully have a report on, on how that all worked out.
Mr. Mann, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to mention the fact that we have a very basic budget here. But as we're talking about spring of 2023, that comes pretty quickly. And my question is, there's a, a statement that says we need to raise enough funds. So my, my request would be to have a basic plan on where those fundraising estimates would come from and what sort of activities. They probably have to start already now to keep moving on it. So I don't know if there's anything like that developed, but I think it would be, be worth it to at least have something for this particular club. I don't know what our other procedures are for other clubs, but since it is new, I think, you know, when we're talking about almost $5,000, we should ensure that we have the various fundraising activities and their estimates in place or at least part of it.
Okay. Can you address that concern?
I'm happy to.
Sure, great, come on.
We haven't, we haven't been able to announce anything, so we haven't started fundraising. So as soon as we can announce it, we can start the fundraising. If we get approved today, I mean, Pete and I are going to go back tomorrow and we're going to try to figure out how to start fundraising. We've all worked for the soccer club. We all have professional careers here in the district. We all know lots of people. I'm not saying $5,000 isn't a lot of money, but I don't think there will be any problem with 600 kids in the middle school soccer or the, the soccer club raising that kind of money to support this program.
That's encouraging, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of these motions?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motions contained in agenda item five are carried. Mr. Pepe, can you cover agenda items eight and nine briefly?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to start tonight with the little more focus on the Treasury's report. There's a lot of activity going on right now, as most people realize, with the Fed rate. And the target rate currently is between 3.0 and 3.25. The most recent increase brought the Fed rate up to 3.08. So if, a lot of us find ourselves chasing rates. And if you look at the backup that was provided in July, you'll see that rates were, like for instance, QNB was at 0.65. That was a marked improvement over where we had been with QNB was 0.30, okay? As rates have been going up, what I've been doing is utilizing our network of banks that we have to move money to where we're getting, you know, a better rate of return. If you fast forward just a month into August, you'll see QNB's rate already up to 2.17%, which is a marked improvement from where it had been. Nutropoli is at 0.7, they had been the best rate at the time. And if you'll see, you got $13 million sitting there, that's no longer there. I've already moved it. And I actually moved about 20 million from QNB to PSD LAF. And PSD LAF is the Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund. They were in at 1.75, they're actually at 2.57 as of today. And that's why I moved the money. In the.
Just real quick. So those aren't set time that you're able to move that money back quickly.
Correct. Correct, they're fully liquid. And that's one of the things to consider. Because, Mr. Demick, one of the things I'm actually looking at is PSD LAF, for instance, this is all in the max fund where we have full liquidity. They have a six-month rate of 3.57. However, we need to determine whether or not our drawdown will have needs for those funds. This happens to be a good time of year for us because we're collecting taxes. That's why money is starting to come in pretty quickly. One of the things I'm also looking at is, I said, I, I moved the balance from Nutropoli back over to QNB, which is probably going to be at 2.9 by October 1st. So I'm, you know, keeping a watchful eye on where rates are going and working with our staff accountant, Shannon Williams, to determine our drawdown needs, much as we do towards the end of the year, when it's kind of like our rough period that we need to start pulling back some of the monies that we have on deposit. So to your point, I have to make sure that we're liquid enough to cover our bills list, our payrolls and anything else that comes up. Like for instance, activity, we had some major payments of bonds that just went through for the month of September. And also we had one in August. So to me, that's exciting, you know, to see, you know, the Fed has gone up five rate hikes since March 15th. And, you know, it's just hopefully heading to more money in the future. And that will also come into consideration as we start preparing for our budget and looking at forecasting what that will do to help, you know, with the needs to balance our budget. So unless there's any questions about that, I'm going to move on to the bills list area.
Mr. Pepe, on that topic, I failed to mention earlier that our loan was extended, our, the window for our loan, should we need it? I don't know if we want to mention.
Yeah, we also, in the facilities committee, we had talked about the financing and whether or not we were going to finance 100% of the project, any percent of the project, and where we were with the intermediate school. We did go out for an RFP and we actually got really good rates and in this case, on the other side. And we spoke with our financial advisor over Concord Financial. And he got back to us and said that the bank was actually going to hold the rate for the period of.
It's into November, I think, it's into November.
Yeah, all the way into November. And we're hoping to get our information for October. So it's good news all the way around in the area of finance. Thank you.
And that was to fund which potential project with the timing?
If, if you recall, remember, we were doing the stadium project and then we were, the intermediate school cost was unknown to us.
Until October, the end of October, which is why you needed to extend the loan window.
And so we extended the loan. So once the information from the estimate of cost for the intermediate school comes back, we will have time then to consider if we need to take a loan and how much we need to take a loan to complete that project, which would not have been the case had the loan not been extended.
Right, okay, so the, you don't have to sacrifice the rate because the rates keep going up. You don't have to sacrifice the rate because the window has been extended.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and that's, and that's the beauty of it. We're, we're still locked in at the, at the rate that we receive. And that was for the, for a bank qualified loan of up to 8 mil. So what we wanted to do is try and forecast what our needs are over the intermediate school and try and wrap it all in so that even if we utilized fund balance that we have set aside for capital projects, we would not necessarily have enough to do the stadium and the IS. So we still have the ability to draw down. So it's, like I said, it's good news all the way around with.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks for that explanation. Because when you were talking about the great rates we're getting and what the investment shuffling you've been able to do to take advantage of those, I got confused for a second about how we are funding. So we are spending down the fund balance, so there won't be as much to shuffle around. However, we do have that good rate locked in. The comparison you were making is the rate is still locked in. Even, okay, so there, okay.
And we can make it now an informed decision because we'll have the information back on the intermediate school estimating how much it will cost, which we, we could not have had under the previous arrangement deadline to take the loan.
Right, and the good news is while we still have that money in the general fund, rates are going up and we're taking advantage of those investments while we have the money in the bank, regardless of when we choose to spend it.
100%.
Thanks, I, I got the connection now, Mr. Pepe, I appreciate it, thank you.
So as, as far as moving on to the bills list, bills list, we have approximately 220 vendors on the bills list with $1,359,000. I'm just going to give you a couple of quick highlights. I don't think there's anything that really jumps out. BSN Sports, $13,700. That's a 60-40 proposition, 40% of it is broken down to, between football for varsity, junior varsity and middle school footballs. 36 at 98, $98 per, 3,500 and wrestling uniforms, 2,200. The other 8,000 is broken down over various sports. Colonial Intermediate, you'll see 68,000. That's special education, professional ed services for 30,000 and partial hospitalization, 38,000, again, special ed related. There's a lot of small vision with certain individuals in the district, vision reimbursement, a couple of tuition reimbursements. E-Spark is site licensing, that's a part of the tech plant software, 24,000. And First, $6,000 pertains to robotics event. I see Hutton Mifflin on there, King Spry, we just started. And you'll notice that we also have Sweet Stevens for some ongoing issues that we still haven't finalized, haven't finalized, but the bills come down considerably. And outside of that, unless somebody has a particular question?
I actually, I'm glad you mentioned the Sweet Stevens because I did notice that that went up. So I mean, I was looking and actually in previous, like the last two months, it was about more in the 3,000 range, and this time it was 5,500. So is it coming to a close? Are we like paying out? Is it just the way the disbursement is working with, like tally of hours type of thing?
There's some tax appeals that they're still fighting on our behalf.
Right.
So some of the billings coming in from that.
Okay.
And I still think there may be a few special ed-related matters that they are bringing to fruition.
Okay.
Any new things that are coming up? We're going through our new solicitor, including tax appeals.
So since we are paying both, I mean, obviously it's a significant expense. I mean, when do we foresee, I guess, wrapping up with Sweet Stevens? I mean, I know some of this stuff is dragging on for some time. Or would we transfer?
Right. And it is like, for instance, there's a large property that's in dispute. And I think that as this leads toward conclusion, whether it's through settlement or hearing, we're going to see spikes. For example, if there's a hearing or there's a lot of activity, there will be a spike in activity. But in time, those will be, you know, falling off the end and hopefully sooner rather than later. But we've said, if they have, if they've had a case and they've been involved with it in a property appeal, they're going to maintain it through its end. And so we'll see spikes going up and down, but the net effect over time will be that they'll be off the books.
Yeah, and Jonathan Herta has already started picking up any of the appeals that come in.
Okay, good.
So we will be transitioning as soon as we possibly can.
Right, thank you.
Moving on, the other part I have, Madam President, is property tax refunds. I believe we have four, a couple are minor lot size adjustments. We have five actually total. Two are major, one's a veterans exemption that was granted, and another one was a property that sustained fire damage. So those are on for approval. And outside of that, the next area I think that we have tonight was the Architect of Record. And again, Jonathan Herta has been working on that on our behalf from Kingspry. There were some items that need to be adjusted, nothing major. We had a conversation with him today. The solicitor for EI happens to be out of the office today. Mr. Herta said we could certainly approve this tonight pending final attorney review. It really comes down to, there was an item about insurance, which has already been satisfied. They actually had more coverage in aggregate than was requested. They have 10 million on top of the 1 million and 2 million. Then the other thing is Article 8, which has to do with mediation arbitration, and that's pretty much in the attorney's arena. So once we get that, then we'll execute. So even though we approve it tonight, we won't execute the document until we get the final approval.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pepe. So taking the motions contained in Items 8 and 9 as stated on the agenda, do I have a motion to?
Second.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Mr. Pepe or administration? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions carry. Mr. Pigeon?
Number 10, Human Resources. We have 15 items up for vote for tonight. The first item is the Pet Program from East Stroudsburg University. The Pet Program is the pre-K educator tuition program, which gives the district a 10% discount on any tuitions that we pay to ESU. It also enables that the individuals taking the courses at ESU will have a deferred payment, and there'll be one payment from the district to ESU for all of the individuals taking courses. They will still meet our current requirements. They still need to go through the ACMC Committee. They would only be paying the state rate as per Kutztown, no fees, no anything, and they need to have a beer better. And that's all understood. So the, that's a plus for both us and the people taking the courses. We have two certified employees that will be asking for your approval, 12 classified employees. We have the retirement of Jennifer Mathias, who is 21 years here in Southern Lehigh as a business and math teacher at the middle school. You'll see there's numerous subs on the agenda for approval. I just want to comment real quickly that last week at one point, Dr. Mann asked me how our subrates were filled, and I said, well, today we're at 100%. Well, we weren't at 100% all week, but that was a good day. Last week we finished, and this is just teachers, last week we finished at about a 72% fill rate. Friday was tough, but the rest of the week was much better. And we are still working on getting subs into our system and getting the staff and the students the educators they need. You'll also see on the agenda, there are numerous coaches, winter sports coaches are outlined, and also the club activities are outlined on there. There are individuals with graduate increase, and then there are some, there's a student teacher, and let me see if I forgot anything on there. There's some long agenda items.
Okay, so taking together, item number 10, A through 0, the motions contained therein.
Correct.
Second.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Pigeon?
I just had a quick question about item number H, extended term substitute, not number H, letter H. Is that a new need or is that filling a need that was, that we needed to get approval for? Is that a new need that we know about or are we patching up and getting better and better?
We're getting better and better, but unfortunately that person gave me a resignation today. So you'll see that on the next board meeting and we, and the building principal thinks they have somebody else to get into that position. And remember, our extended term subs are substitutes that go from over 20 days to less than 90 days.
Okay.
So that's somebody who's out on a leave that we need to fill.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll get somebody in there very shortly to take care of that.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, those HR actions are approved. Do we have any committee reports, Facilities?
Yeah, Facilities met last week, and that was in particular to the agenda item for the Architect of Record. We interviewed them and the other candidates that were presented. And then if I recall, earlier in the month, we were simply finalizing what would be recommended to the board. Don't think I'm missing anything from that, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aliso. Do we have any new business?
I had a question. Well, yeah, I think I would direct it towards Ms. Trinkle. Dual enrollment, I was wondering if there was a way to see how many students that we have that are taking dual enrollment eligible classes that are actually utilizing the dual enrollment option and how many are not. I know that the teachers did a decent job of telling the kids about the dual enrollment, but these kids don't understand the ramifications of not utilizing this, so they're not telling their parents. And the only parents that really seem to know are the ones that are like listening to meetings like this and paying attention. A lot of parents don't know, and I think that that's a big disservice to our parents because like, I know we don't normally talk about personal stuff, but my son is going to have a whole semester of college done before he goes to college, thousands of dollars in savings. And I think that it's really important to make sure that these parents are hearing about this and we're not just telling the students because the students are not going home and relaying the message. They don't understand. Also, I will say again that I've gone through the process again with two, for two students, and it is so incredibly difficult. It's almost impossible to find it on the webpage.
Yes.
And when you do find it, there aren't any clear instru-, like, under our academic tab, there should be like dual enrollment. And when you click on it, you go in and it says LTRIC. These are the classes that are eligible. This is how you do it. Here's a link to LTRIC's website. This is what you have to get from your counselor or your teachers or whatever. Because the few people that I know of that are utilizing dual enrollment are incredibly frustrated. They're texting me, they're calling me, how did you do it? It's a process, and it's just such an incredible opportunity for these kids that I'd hate to see it not being utilized because people don't either know or that the process is incredibly frustrating.
And just to echo that too, I mean, just to, it is really difficult to figure out how to do it. One suggestion, I mean, like, so some of the teachers are really good about, I guess they forwarded on an email from Guidance with respect to the courses that were eligible for dual enrollment, as well as, you know, for example, the course name and number, which you need for the university, in this case, LTRIC, to sign up. But what, the link that's embedded in the email itself just takes you to the LTRIC page. It doesn't take you to the direct page that you need to sign up. So that takes a little navigating when it's late in the evening and a parent's been busy all day. It's kind of hard. Of course, it's always the night before it's due.
Yeah, to echo that again, that the great thing is we are having courses available for dual enrollment to kids of honors and non-honors and freshmen. That's wonderful. But I think the flip side of that, that probably this year, most of all, because we've had our greatest offering ever, is that freshmen have no idea what the words dual enrollment mean. And the only people who could understand that impact potentially are financially, their parents. And so when a teacher does the due diligence and announces it and says it's a great opportunity, dual enrollment, kids aren't, they have no idea what that is. And so they aren't delivering the message home to their parents. And then perhaps those kids who would be most in need of or could benefit most from these kinds of rates are those parents who are not necessarily as plugged into the, you know, PTA grapevine, as it were, to find out that they're talking about this topic in class. So it's a wonderful thing, but I think what the community is discovering is maybe freshmen don't, or sophomores don't understand what that concept is. And like, everybody is doing their absolute best, like the teachers are trying to connect the kids to this resource and Guidance is putting the information out there. But it's new, and at the same time, when you go to like LTRIC or a website, it says your teacher and guidance department will walk you through all of this. And all the emails that are being sent out by teachers and Guidance are, this is between you and the institution of choice, and they will walk you through all of this. And so literally the kid is like, eh, I'm just going to forget about this because one's telling me to talk to this. So it's just working out the kinks, I think. Yeah.
Do we have any other new business?
I had one other question, sorry. And Mike, I was going to avoid asking you, but a parent just asked me today, did you find out about the green slips?
Yes, we did. Thank you. I should have reported. Following our last meeting, I had the opportunity to speak with Representatives of Transportation. Our intention is to bring back the green slips because of the advocacy. We need a little, we need a few more buses running, and we're getting there, actually. So the green slips will be coming back. We were hesitant to do it as we were in the throes of the problems we were experiencing. But with the greens, the green slips will be, will be back in short order. And we are getting actually back on our feet when it comes to, because we had a day where we had no subs. I think we were down to one vehicle on the better day last week of not having, not having our run. So yes, the green slips will be emerging before too very long.
Okay. Don't apologize. Thank you very much. Do we have any visitor comments post-meeting?
No.
Okay, unless there's any objection, we are adjourned at 8:00 PM.